In order for the transcription to work out, your mic will have to be on when you speak. I know some of them translate a little weirdly.
All right, it is seven o'clock, so at this time I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of this evening and ask you to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item three on our agenda is our roll call. Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Elise?
Here.
Commissioner Fraga-Sainz?
Here.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Here.
And Chair Neiman? Here. Thank you. Item four is the review of our agenda. Ms. Taggart?
Thank you. We do have a couple of memorandums on item eight B that everyone received prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you very much. All the commissioners received those and have an opportunity to review them, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. May I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fraga-Sainz and a second from Commissioner Henderson. May I please get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Alvarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Elise?
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga-Sainz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Chair Neiman? Yes. All right, thank you very much. That brings us to public comments for items that are not on our agenda this evening or on our consent calendar. Our consent calendar this evening consists of approving the minutes from our last month's meeting. So if there is anybody here to speak on that item or any items not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. All right. Seeing nobody, we will move on to item seven. May I please get a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Vice Chair Henderson and a second from Commissioner Fraga-Sainz. May I please get a roll call on the motion? Commissioner Alvarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Elise?
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga-Sainz?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Chair Neiman?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes with five yes votes. That will bring us to our first public hearing on this item.
Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to see you all again. This presentation is for a conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero eight. This is a request to establish a California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control License Type forty-one for the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption within an existing bona fide restaurant, Chipotle Mexican Grill, located at three eight two zero five forty-seventh Street East. The project site is located within the yellow highlighted area of this aerial photograph. You see that there to the north of the photograph? Next slide, please. The project is located within the community commercial land use designation and general commercial zone and is currently operating as a restaurant. Approval of the CUP would allow for the establishment of beer and wine sales for onsite consumption. No exterior modifications are proposed. Alcohol sales are incidental to the primary restaurant use and less than two percent of the floor area will be used for the sale, storage, or display of alcohol. The restaurant currently operates from ten forty-five AM to ten PM daily. Per the municipal code, the Planning Commission may consider the following to determine if the CUP should be approved: whether the proposed use would result in an over-intensification of alcoholic beverage establishments, whether it would be located in a high crime area, other information about the surrounding area, and the hours of operation. The second method to determine over-intensification is the... Excuse me. Skip my notes. The two methods to determine over-intensification are population density and retail density. The population density method compares the proportion of alcohol establishments to the population in the city to the number and population within the subject census tract. There are currently eighty-two on-sale alcoholic beverage establishments within the city of Palmdale and zero within the census tract, which is Census Tract nine one zero seven point two one. Using the population density method above, there is currently not an over-intensification of an on-sale, sorry, of on-sale alcoholic beverage establishments. With the proposed on-sale establishments, there will be eighty-three total on-sale establishments within the city and one within the subject census tract. This amounts to one establishment for every three thousand three hundred and thirty people within the census tract and one for every two thousand and forty-two people citywide. The second method to determine over-intensification is a retail density method, which considers an over-intensification to occur when the number of alcoholic establishments within a two thousand five hundred foot radius of the proposed site exceeds the average number of licenses within a two thousand five hundred foot radius of a sample of twenty randomly selected on-sale establishments located within commercial areas of the city. Using this method, this site would not have an over-intensification because there is an average of fourteen establishments within the radius of the sample locations and zero within the radius of this project site. As such, staff believes that the proposed location is appropriate and consistent with the purpose of the municipal code. Next, a high-crime area is defined as an area with a crime rate of a hundred and twenty percent of the citywide average. This map shows the crimes that occurred within the crime reporting district in which the project site is located. The reporting district would be considered a high-crime area because it exhibits a crime rate of five times the citywide average. However, according to the L.A. County Sheriff's Department, there was one call for service at the project site from August twenty twenty-one to August twenty twenty-two, and the sheriff's department has not indicated any opposition to the approval of this conditional use permit. Additionally, this project complies with all location standards for bona fide restaurants with alcohol sales as specified with the municipal code. With this, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving CUP twenty-two dash zero zero eight and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. This concludes staff's report, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, if there are no questions, then I am going to open the public hearing on this item. If you are here to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. Is there anybody in calling in to speak on this?
We have one.
Okay.
Valerie Sax, feel free to unmute yourself.
Good evening.
Hi Valerie, welcome.
Oh, hi. Okay, it's always a little tricky on these two things. I guess I can imagine myself to be in that dip, on that dice right over there that's right in front of you. So yeah, my name is Valerie Sax. I'm with the GrillLicense.com. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Chipotle Mexican Grill. We represent them, and we've represented them for more than ten years, specifically in locations throughout Southern California, doing conditional use permits and similar local government approvals. They're an outstanding operator. They, this is just something that they like to be able to offer their patrons to, you know, for those who want to have them. The Chipotle, basically, even though it's in some senses a fast food restaurant, it sees itself as a step up from a typical fast food restaurant in a whole bunch of different ways. It basically was a pioneer of the fast casual sort of substrata, which is basically a higher-end kind of fast food that offers a better quality experience, better caliber of food, better, better quality of decor, just the overall dining experience is a bit more elevated as compared to a typical fast food restaurant. All of the restaurants are architect-designed, including this one. The food is freshly prepared to the customer's order right in front of them, and the ability to offer these items, to have these items with their burritos or other Mexican-style food is just something that they like to be able to have in order to distinguish themselves from... It's just something that they like to be able to have in order to... It's just something that their patrons frequently appreciate. So they have an outstanding record of compliance with the California ABC throughout the state of California and parallel agencies throughout the country. And they're basically a good operator. If they're, all of the stores are corporate-owned, so they have, their operations are systematized, and they have a lot of policies and procedures in place to ensure that their, that their stores are well-run and that it's a good experience for their patrons and that these items are managed responsibly. Like I said, it's a very small percentage of gross receipts. It's just something they like to be able to offer to their customers. I'm mostly here to answer questions, but I just wanted to give a little, a little bit of an overview as to what, what their thoughts are with respect to alcoholic beverage consumption.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Sax. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, if there are no questions for the applicant, is there anybody in the room to speak on this item?
Say that I, I support that the applicant's application for alcohol sales. Anybody that eats a Chipotle burger knows you're not going, you can't get buzzed off after drinking a six-pack of beer, so. It's just, you know, alcohol isn't looked at the same it was twenty years ago, you know? And people just enjoy to have a little drink once in a while with their meal, so I support it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zink. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, if there is no objection, I shall close the public hearing on this item. And I would like to ask the commissioners for either a discussion or a motion on the item.
Discussion, I'd like to say something. I was reading over the, the CUP request, and they did a great job in establishing the safety surrounding that and the support of the sheriffs, and that it's only in-house, right? They're not selling it through the drive-thru, so that gave me some comfort. So for those reasons and what's explained here, I'm supporting this.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Alvarez. Then would you like to be the one to make the motion?
Tell me what you're gonna say.
Obviously. My motion to adopt Resolution PC twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero eight. A request to establish a Type forty-one on-sale beer and wine Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control License for a bona fide, a bona fide restaurant located at thirty-eight two oh five forty-seventh Street East and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you very much. Let the record show that we have a motion from Commissioner Alvarez and a second from Commissioner Fraga-Sainz. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then may we please have a roll call vote? Commissioner Alvarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Elise?
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga-Sainz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Chair Neiman? Yes. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much, Ms. Sax, for your attendance virtually. And that will bring us to item eight B. But before we actually present that, I would like to recognize some members of our General Plan Advisory Committee that are in-house today. So this evening, we have Pat Hunt and Laura Gordon and Jason Zink, who all have been working diligently the last three years on this general plan. So I want to thank you personally for your time and effort in getting this to the point that it is this evening and let you know that you are appreciated and your time and energy are appreciated. So thank you very much. And thanks for braving a Planning Commission meeting, because sometimes, you know. So with that being said, I shall turn it over to...
All of us.
All of you.
So this is going to be a joint presentation effort. So we do have some representatives from our consultant team on the line as well, Simran with Raimi and Matt from Rincon. So I am going to go ahead and start the presentation, and we'll kind of go on through. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Taggart. I'm the Planning Manager for the city of Palmdale. This item this evening is General Plan Amendment twenty dash zero zero three and Environmental Impact Report twenty-two dash zero zero two. And they are for the comprehensive update to the city's general plan, which we refer to as Palmdale twenty forty-five. So I wanted to take a moment to recap on exactly what a general plan is. A general plan is a document that's a roadmap for the future of the city. It establishes the city's long-term vision for the next twenty-three years and specifically how the community will change and grow and what the values and priorities are for the future. The city is required by the state to have a general plan, and based on the vision for the city, general plans have goals, policies, and implementing actions that provide direction to staff and decision-makers. The city's current general plan has nine elements, and except for housing, which was updated in twenty fourteen, the rest have not been updated comprehensively in twenty-nine years. The general plan not only includes the incorporated city shown here in the gray, but it also includes the sphere of influence, which includes the area around the current city boundary and three county pockets shown here in the red outline. It's important to include the sphere of influence within the planning area as these areas will eventually be annexed into the city, and we want to make sure that we have designations for them when they, when they do so. So this leads us to where we are in the process, which is at the end. So there's six major segments for the project. So we started with the learning phase, which was early in twenty nineteen, and then we moved on to the visioning phase, where the community and decision-maker input was received. And then in the third phase, we had alternatives, which were created to depict what goes where based on the input that we received during the second phase, and then we created that preferred alternative. And during the fourth and fifth phases, we were preparing the document and supporting material, and we're now in the final stage, which is adoption of the document. And that brings us to community engagement. So outreach efforts for the general plan have been extensive and have included a variety of meetings and workshops, presentations, surveys, advertising, strategically timed to gather feedback during key points in the process. The team even got creative and due to the pandemic, created a YouTube channel. And on that channel, they streamed their General Plan Advisory Committee meetings and gave the community an additional avenue to provide input on the project. Outreach covered both digital and print outlets in both English and Spanish. And as summarized here on the screen, there were digital marketing components, which were email blasts, social media posts, geo-targeting advertisements within the Palmdale Minute, on the Cafe Con Leche radio show, on two electronic billboards by the freeway, and then there were some interviews on one of the local Spanish radio stations. And then there were also extent print notification materials, which included distribution of paper surveys and postcards and flyers and posters and advertisements in El Sol Magazine, AV Smart Buys, and Palmdale Connections. And then there were also some press releases from some of the local newspapers, and then there were banners that were displayed at city parks and the public library. Okay, and then from all of the input, we created this vision statement, which I will just read word for word, so I'm sorry for that. The vision for Palmdale twenty forty-five, as gathered from community input, is that Palmdale is a thriving, safe, socially and economically diverse community where people of all ages live and work in harmony. Palmdale offers affordable living, high-quality jobs, and educational opportunities in a beautiful high-desert setting. So with the vision statement in place, we created major vision themes. So the themes are shown here on your screen, and they are broad and address all aspects of life in Palmdale, like creating a downtown, diversifying the local economy with more jobs, providing more housing options for residents from all income and ability levels, preserving the natural setting of the high desert, and creating a safe and healthy city. And with that, I will hand it off to Brenda.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll be going over the structure of the general plan. As previously mentioned, the city general plan has not been updated in twenty-nine years. So before we dive into it, there's a few things that I'd like to point out. First is that this document will live primarily online. So right now, you can access it on the Palmdale twenty forty-five website, and that's where it will remain. The second is that it is an interactive document, meaning that when you're going through the document and other studies and specific plans are referenced, you'll be able to find direct links, and it'll take you to that section that they are referring to. The general plan consists of sixteen chapters. Each city has an opportunity to incorporate any additional topics that are unique to our city. So in our case, we've included topics related to community design, economic development, military compatibility, parks, natural and cultural resources, infrastructure, and... Community, I'm sorry, infrastructure and community facilities, sustainability and climate action. I'd also like to point out that the chapter fourteen will serve as the city's climate action plan, and the housing element is under a separate cover because it is on a separate cycle and gets updated every eight years. The vision of a complete city was the guiding theme when creating the framework of the land use map with a focus on twenty-minute neighborhoods where most residential neighborhoods have access to jobs, parks, healthy foods and services, diversified housing options, and access to higher education and healthcare within the city. Next slide. The land use framework map highlights the areas where changes to existing land uses are proposed. These changes incorporate the visioning themes discussed earlier by envisioning a downtown area, employment uses around Plant Forty-two, health and wellness, and providing for mixed residential and commercial uses along Palmdale Boulevard. The framework plan also indicates key locations for village centers and multi-use notes. The city of Palmdale has a unique opportunity in that currently it has over five thousand acres of undeveloped land. And of those undeveloped acres, thirty percent of them are considered infill. The land use map on the screen includes twenty-seven land use designations, some of which have been refined and some to comply with current best practice, and some of them are new designations you see here and are in direct response to the input received from the G-PAC members of the public. The new designations include varying density ranges to address the need for multifamily, varying mixed use to provide flexibility, health and wellness to maintain access to healthcare, education flex to create spaces for high-level training for jobs, employment flex, which is designated to accommodate employment-generating types of uses, including office flex and light industrial uses, aerospace industrial to continue supporting our aerospace industry. In addition to the general plan document, staff is recommending a prohibition on general plan amendments for a period of eighteen months. This will exclude planned developments in specific plans over twenty acres. Staff feels that this is important because the residents of Palmdale have given us lots of input, and we've received input from the G-PAC as well as decision-makers, and it's important that we see this vision through a long term. The general plan is a long-term document, and this sees beyond today. And it really sets the blueprint for twenty forty-five. Next slide. The housing element was approved by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD, on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Southern California Association of Governments, also known as SCAG, assigns each jurisdiction a total number of workforce housing units that needs to be accounted for, and that is broken down by income level. The city of Palmdale has been assigned six thousand six hundred and forty residential units at varying income levels and has managed to meet those requirements. The purpose of the housing element is to accommodate the ability to develop workforce housing. The city's role is not responsible for the development of these properties, but simply ensuring that policies and programs in place accommodate the development of workforce housing. As I mentioned previously, we have over five thousand acres of undeveloped land, and thirty percent of those properties qualify for infill development. With that, I want to point out that two hundred and fifty acres of vacant land have been carefully designated as housing sites in the housing element, and a majority of those sites were chosen because they are considered infill and have utility connections available. This is a huge asset for future development of the selected sites. It is also important to note that certification from HCD ensures that our housing element is in compliance with state law and allows the city to apply for grant-funded opportunities. Next slide. Switching gears over to the Mobility Section of Palmdale twenty forty-five. A few big takeaways through the public process is to support the vision of a complete city. A few big takeaways through the public process is to support the vision of a complete city with twenty-minute neighborhoods. Through this process, a new roadway classification system has been adopted, regional crosstown connector and neighborhood roadway classifications. The intent of the new roadway is to create safe travel for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, and vehicles by just by design suggestions to improve these nodes of transportation throughout the city. On the screen here, we have the roadway classification map that demonstrates the new types of roadways, and the bicycle network map that includes four different types of bike paths that line up with the new roadway classifications. And the transit network map is in alignment with expected land use changes, and increased investment in local transit centers, rail station, transit development priority ages areas, and regional high-capacity transit. With that, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Simran.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, good evening, chairwoman, I share Henderson and other commissioners. I'm pleased to be here today. I'll walk you through um the remainder of the general plan elements, starting with uh economic development. Um, this element, while it's not required, is one of the most important in the general plan, um as it establishes goals and policies for the city's continued economic health. Um, the chapter contains goals and policies related to job preservation and diversification, and how to create local workforce for those jobs with new educational pathways and workforce training options. Um, besides preserving airspace jobs that are a mainstay of Palmdale's economy, um the general plan looks forward to that diversification I just mentioned by attracting uh post-production and post-production film-related jobs, um as well as other private airspace industries. Next slide please. Um, Plant Forty-two is an incredible asset in the in the community, and it's been very important to the local economy and identity here in Palmdale. So in order to uh enhance that, we have prepared a separate uh element to address military compatibility. Um, this element has two primary focuses or fokai. Uh, one is to maintain and continue supporting Plant Forty-two operations in Palmdale. Um, in addition to preserving the mission of the plant, the element also provides direction on how to reduce conflicts that could impact military operations and/or cause negative impacts to Palmdale residents. Next please. And the equitable and healthy communities uh element focuses on improving quality of life, uh health outcomes, and equity across Palmdale. Some of the strategies that were developed through research and discussions with community members um were aimed at addressing and improving health and equity citywide. Um, these strategies are listed here, and there are many more in the plan document itself. Um, this element also meets the requirements of Senate Bill One Thousand, um which required us to identify disadvantaged areas in the city and to create goals and policies to help address the disparate health and equity impacts uh related to those communities. Next please. And the parks, recreation, and open space element um deals with the some of the common themes related to those three topics shared throughout our G-PAC meetings, as well as discussions with our with community members during the three-year process. The major strategies that are included in the element are related to increasing access to parks and open space for all residents in the city. Uh, by looking at where existing resources are, uh and where future ones are planned, um and where for future population growth is projected, um the element identifies priority locations for new park resources across the city. Uh, when future funding and property is available, the city can work to prioritize creation of of new parks. Um, I'll also note that the city is just starting off uh parks and recreation master plan um that will uh take the recommendations in the in this element to the next level in terms of implementation, and doing facilities needs assessments, um and so forth. Uh, the sustainability, climate action, and resilience element serves as the city's climate action plan, uh which details the path to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and meeting uh State of California's sustainability and climate requirements. Um, this is important, because it opens up the city uh for grant-funding opportunities and avoids and avoids potential penalties from the state. In addition, the element covers other issues like waste management, ecosystems, stewardship, equitable access to open space, as well as supporting the overall health and well-being of the community. Um, the climate action plan also looks at social vulnerability, um which is now a requirement from the state through Senate Bill Three Seventy-nine, where it considers uh some of the environmental factors or hazards, and layers them on the disadvantaged disadvantaged communities, and develops strategies to uh to mitigate those impacts. Next please. And the safety element um is a required element of the general plan. Um, it deals with natural and human-caused hazards and safety issues in the city. Uh, it operates in conjunction conjunction with the city's uh local hazard mitigation plan, as well as emergency operations plan. Um, this element also addresses new state legislation related to emergency evacuation and wildfire um conditions. Um, other safety topics that are included in this element uh include fire and police uh response times and uh impacts to uh public safety. Um, there are several other technical elements in the general plan that deal with required topics. These include conservation, air quality, noise, um and uh public facilities and infrastructure. Um, we uh those are not covered in this presentation at this time. And I'll hand this back over to Megan to talk about the environmental review.
Thank you. Okay, so for the environmental process for general or for the Palmdale twenty forty-five, um the city prepared and circulated an environmental impact report. The state requires several opportunities for input during the preparation of the EIR, starting with the notice of preparation, then the draft and final document prior to the city taking formal action to certify the final report. The EIR analyzes the impacts of the project on the environment, and through this analysis, certain mitigation measures are applied to future projects carried out under Palmdale twenty forty-five as applicable. In this instance, there are two areas that could not be mitigated to a level of insignificance, and those were air quality and utilities and service systems. So a statement of overriding considerations was prepared and is proposed for adoption, along with the final EIR. So that brings us to um staff recommendation. What I would like to note is, um as I mentioned previously, you did receive a couple of memorandums on this item. Um, the first one was some cleanup items for Exhibit Four related to um some areas on the land use map that were incorrectly labeled, um and an FAR for public facilities that was incorrectly um labeled as well. And then the second memorandum you received was regarding the environmental document. Um, our safety element had to be reviewed by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, and it was, and it was approved with these couple little um changes to our naming conventions in the document. Um, so those will also be updated. So with that, um staff's recommendation is to is that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending city council approval of the general plan amendment, re-adoption of the HCD-certified housing element, um certification of the EIR, and adoption of a statement of overriding considerations as amended. And in addition, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending city council approval of the establishment of the prohibition on amendments to the general plan. And that concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, team. I appreciate your time. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for the team of staff members at this time? Maybe you do?
Yeah, it's kind of like about barrel springs. I know that we're keeping some of it open space, but there's an area back there that's really concerning that we can go further as far as protecting the environment, because that area really reflects on the whole AV. That there's um people burying stuff over there, that live over there, on that one wetland strip. So if we can address that, but there's also, I know that you put it for Equestrian Residential, that's right between the lake and between the boulders, right? We're living there in that area, that's a lot of seismic activity right there.
And so what is your recommendation?
If we can spread our open space a little bit more. Could we? I mean, with the grants and the with the state for open space right now that they're doing?
We can certainly look into that, um and and see what what makes sense in that area, um and just give it a once-over before we go before city council.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Braga Zanes. Any other technical questions for staff at this time? All right, then at this time, I am going to open the public hearing on this item. And I would like to remind everybody that this is your chance to speak. Um, it is not a dialogue between us and you, it is your three minutes that you have, so we will not be um interrupting you, uh nor will we be answering your questions while you're up there for your three minutes. We will take notes, and we will try to get your questions answered um during our discussion time. And I would like to start, Miguel, are there any people with their hands up in the virtual world?
None at this time.
All right. And I do have a speaker slip here from Pat Hunt. Mr. Hunt, would you like to come forward? I assume so, since I have this. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, I'm Pat Hunt. Um, I've a G-PAC member, uh real estate broker for thirty-six years in Palmdale. I'm lifelong resident, other than a few years, a couple of years in Marine Corps, so sixty-six years here in Palmdale. Um, I'd like to say that this planning, uh this this process for the general plan uh went real well. I I think it uh um the staff and and consultants did an amazing job putting together a general plan and putting up with me. The um my two concerns, I voiced at the very first meeting, was transportation, circulation, and preserving and protecting the mission of Plant Forty-two, and I think that we've accomplished that. I'm not just happy with this plan, but I'm proud of it. I had the opportunity to meet with uh over the three-plus years of many uh property owners and business owners in the city of Palmdale to discuss the changes that affected their properties, their businesses, their concerns. And I think that we mitigated those those uh concerns with pretty much everybody. This uh G-PAC wasn't my first rodeo. I um was on the General Plan Advisory Committee a little over thirty-two years ago. And um uh it's changed a lot, the process has changed quite a bit since then. We're not chiseling on stone anymore. But I gotta say that the guy sitting in the seat behind me over here, I was introduced to the city of Palmdale at that time. He was the EO of the Build Building Industry Association, and I'd never seen a mayor get so mad at a statement made by those people. But it was, there's a lot of stories from way back then. But Rick Norris uh was introduced to the city of Palmdale, and has been a vital uh part of that part of the city since then. Um, but I, like I said, I'm not just happy with it, I'm proud of the plan that we've put together here, and uh that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. All right. I don't have any more speaker slips, but if somebody is here to speak on this item, oh, raise your hand over there, you have a speaker slip, so how about you give it to me, and then I'll let you talk. Is that a deal? Or give it to the clerk, and then I'll let you talk.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Rick Norris, I've lived in Palmdale thirty-three years. And as Pat said, I've been involved in a lot of things in the community, always striving to make it a little better place. And what we why I'm here tonight, I can see the rest of them are all Rams fans watching the Rams game, we're not. But we're not here to delay the general plan at all. What we are trying to do is to correct some mistakes that will be made that are attempting to be made now, the regional commercial, commercial, by allowing housing. We have a change occurring over there at the AV Mall, and I'm not so sure that we're going to see any more big-box retailers coming in. Everything is online, we're not going to see too many auto auto dealers, maybe a Mercedes dealer for uh some of the the realtors that are working here in the valley. But I think the opportunity exists for us to be able to correct what could be a problem. And since there's a going to be a uh moratorium on any general plan amendments, we need to do this right correctly right now. And what we've done, we've attended, I don't know, a thousand workshops, it seems like. Uh, we've had input, and we've made input, we've even suggested changes to the to the city, the staff. But none of those changes have entered into any of the documents that we're seeing today. What we're trying to do is to make regional commercial less restrictive, because if the plan is to have this walking twenty minutes from house to to destination, then we need to create housing, we need additional housing. We uh I'm representing Beltdale LLC that owns the property on the east of the Fourteenth Freeway, south of Palmdale Boulevard. That in itself, if it doesn't become the regional uh center, rec center, then we're going to have to come up with a plan to develop that. And and the idea of bring us a deal, we'll see if we can make it fit, doesn't wash too well, because now we have to go through all the changes. And we can correct that tonight by adding least restriction of of putting housing permitted into the general plan of regional commercial. That's site one. In site two, I have a fair amount of knowledge of the hospital and wellness district. We are working very hard to become a teaching hospital here. Where are we going to put the residents, starting next year? If the program is approved, the state gives all the permissions, we're going to have to have residents, and they're not going to live in motel rooms, because they're going to be here for weeks, maybe months, to do their residency. So we have to have that ability to to create housing near the wellness district as part of the plan. The the idea of the regional commercial is great. But if you don't allow housing, which you're trying to create now next to the mall, we're going down the wrong path. Let's do it right from the beginning. Let's allow that housing to be able to be put in as 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 part of a development. As far as bringing a plan, bringing a developer to the to the city, I mean, we're not going to stand out there with signs like Progressive Insurance saying, you know, Palmdale, opportunity, bring us your deal. That's not going to happen. We have to be able to lay it out, plan, go after the people that we need, the developers, builders, and plan that area, that land for the proper use. And that proper use, it's site one. We need housing over there if we're going to be the rec center or another uh commercial development. Site two, which is next to the hospital, we have to have more housing. It allows for senior, let's see, uh senior housing. Out of time.
Sorry, your time is up.
Oh, no. Well.
But I would like to note that we did receive Ms. Quaitman's um email, and then I also had some communication from you today, so I think some of us are aware of what.
And we kind of, we tried to line it out with the.
You need to be quiet now, sir. But thank you.
Story of my life.
We're trying to be fair to everybody, Mr. Norris, so. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
Uh, Jason Zink. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff, they were very professional, and uh very nice, and and the members of the committee were wonderful to be with. My my problems was with COVID. My, my problems was with COVID, you had Zoom meetings, right? So you couldn't really sit down with a map and do strategy and do the thing. I didn't know Rick Norris was gonna be here today, but I agree with him. There's still, we can't approve it yet. It's not quite there. There still needs to be more strategy. I'd like the Housing Director, the Economic Development Director, and some strategic people to sit in room and to really strategize this plan. Uh, I have to agree with you, Christina, on the open space around in the lake. Palmdale Water District comes the other side. It's perfect to make a Central Park for Palmdale. Make a really beautiful thing. It should be all open space from Sierra Highway to Twenty-Fifth, in my opinion, with the trails and Horse Equestrian and all that, Central Park. Like he said, we have to be flexible with commercial. Because if we're not flexible, we're not gonna get good products. Like I want the city of Palmdale to pitch to get two thousand IRS jobs and put them at Sears, you know? No, we need a call center. I don't care. I know that you think that, but you gotta think that these are goods, seventy thousand dollar jobs, government jobs, and, and Sears is just sitting empty. We're not gonna get no more box offices. I've been trying to get Costco on the east side for twenty years. So please trust me, I know all about box offices. We've made, there's a lot of strategic mistakes that we weren't able to address because of COVID. For instance, on Forty-seventh and S, that's a center, epicenter of east side. That should all, you should have commercial and around it should be multifamily, right? So we have that walkable, rideable community. On Seventieth Street East and S, there was too much commercial put in the plan. Because you can't, you know, you can overbuild, and then what are you gonna do? You can only have so many Walmarts, you know, Targets, and then it's done. So you can't, and then you already have other properties that are zone commercial up the street. So now you're diminishing their opportunity. They've been paying taxes for the last thirty years. So you gotta be fair. Across from Drytown, it should, there should be apartments there. It shouldn't be R seven thousand. You have commercial there. You just approved townhouses down the street. I know townhouses are wanting to go across the side, the north side of S, so why wouldn't you put apartments or townhomes right next to Drytown and call them Drytown Apartments? Or Drytown Village, right, to go along with the commercial? Strategic. I have a client who's been wanting for twenty years to put apartments on Avenue R and Division Street. So you have apartments here. Matt is building a hundred unit apartment. You got all these apartments here, and then you're gonna put R seven thousand along the freeway? Does that make any sense? No, it doesn't. You go to Santa Clarita, what do they have? They have townhouses, apartments along the freeway. The thing is, we need a strategic session, and, but there have been a lot of property owners.
Your time.
Yeah, there's been a lot of property owners that have wanted to get input and they couldn't do it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? You, you can hand your form over to the clerk, please. Welcome.
Thank you.
You are James Henry Valdez?
Yes, I am.
All right, welcome, sir. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm here to represent Dr. Ming Maak. He owns some property on Forty-fifth Street East and Pear Blossom Highway. And it, um, he purchased it in two thousand and fourteen, and it's commercial, multi-zoned with residential. And I think in two thousand and eighteen, he got entitlement to build the commercial structures in the front and condos or townhouses in the back. So he did some research with the people around us on two walls, his residential, nice neighborhoods, that didn't want townhouses looking down from their patios into their backyard while they're having a barbecue. And so we would like to recommend the zoning change where we could put, like, arrow, extra space, storage, where the townhouses were and keep the commercial frontage for maybe four or five local businesses that wanna move from central Palmdale to a second location. I, I believe the zoning is, um, already proposed to, we've had a vested meeting with all the powers that be, with Megan, the, you know, street and water and power and fire and all those people, and they kind of was in favor of it. And, you know, I hope, and so it's going, I don't know the zoning that it is now or the zoning where it's going, but hopefully it goes to where we could put storage instead of residential townhouse. I think that's, I don't know, I won't speak. I think it's M two or whatever it is. I, I'm not exactly sure. But, um, I think our vested meeting that we had went really well and, and some people were, you know, interested in that happening, and the community around it. We'd put all the walls where people wouldn't see anybody, the frontage would be glass where you could see the storages back there, and then we went to take all the vehicles that can't park on Palmdale Streets, like boats and campers, and stick them in the middle of our controlled environment storage area. And then have the businesses on the front, you know, the truck stop is now down the street from us, a few blocks, and they had to do their laundry, coin op laundry thing. You know, different established businesses that just needed that second location. That'd be a good location, I think. And I've been here since nineteen fifty-eight, and I graduated in nineteen seventy, and I have a fifty-year reunion coming up, so I'm a Palmdalian for sure. And, and you guys all did a great job, and I love the fast track ten checkout forms. And we have engineers and hundreds of thousands of dollars already invested.
Thank you very much for your time. All right, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, then seeing nobody, anybody popped in? All right. Then if there's no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item. And we will bring it to discussion and/or a motion.
On the, um, that one, um, area by the hospital, we have kind of a, a limited triangle there. And I, I think we just, the last time we brought this, I had asked questions about having that campus where doctors and these, and these, they're saying that it's gonna be a training hospital or whatever, where there could be some living quarters incorporated into this campus, the hospital campus. Again, for the, the doctors that are working there or whatever. Did we add that to our zoning or to our, our, what do they call it, medical plan, the medical area plan, where that would give them the option to, in this campus for the Palmdale Regional Hospital, to be able to incorporate some housing for the, the workers at the hospital?
So yes, the Health and Wellness District will be accommodating those types of uses that there is residency program or for doctors and nurses to live there. It would be a huge detriment to us to designate that as multifamily, as we've already dedicated lots of new designations to fill the residential gap between the missing middle. And we've incorporated mixed use as well. That also allows flexibility for housing. This is one of three areas throughout the city. So if we allow multifamily here in the Health and Wellness, this also affects the two other locations. So that's something to keep in mind. But the city does support that type of development, but that type of development is not, um, up for, for review at this time.
So you're saying that it can be done?
Correct.
This concept of having, uh, housing, workforce housing for the physicians or people working at the hospital to be able to walk across the parking lot into some housing?
Correct. That's the idea for these centers. The idea is to have housing for nurses and doctors through any kind of program that Palmdale Regional has, whether it's a residency program or whatnot, and also have, you know, assisted living facilities or any kind of facility that is, um, an accessory to the hospital in that manner.
Did you say that what you just discussed was not in review? What exactly is not in review on what we just discussed?
There's no project proposed at that location at this time.
Any reason why?
Well, I think you need a developer.
It's self-explanatory, right? Thank you. But if one came forward, that's something that could be done?
Correct. If it's something that is in conjunction with the hospital or will, will be associated with the hospital or something that will help the Health and Wellness District, yes, that's something that the city would consider.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going back through my notes. In reference to what I believe Mr. Norris was referring to, so Site Two was the hospital, Health and Wellness area. Site One was the close to the freeway area, right?
The Carrows, the Carrows, freeway to Carrows, parcels in there?
Correct.
Okay, um, and I believe what the request was to allow housing in a regional commercial area. And.
Correct. So first and foremost, this site is twenty-eight acres. And the for your consideration tonight is the prohibition per, for general plan amendments for eighteen months, which excludes development or planned developments or specific planned amendments for properties or developments over twenty acres. So if there was ever a project, that is something that could be considered at that time. The reason it's important that we don't allow multifamily within the regional commercial is for a number of reasons. There's less than one percent total within the city already. So I think that it's important that we preserve the, the commercial nodes that we do have. And second, we have to remember that the, the state also is considering a bill at this time that may allow regional commer, or commercial, I'm sorry, multifamily within regional commercial uses. So that may be coming down at some point for the state, but that's not something that the city wants to recommend. Another thing to keep in mind is that this is also adjacent to the freeway. And having, you know, high dense houses there is probably not the best practice. And another thing to consider is a part of this general plan, we also are considering the LA County Film Zone. So this property also has a lot of opportunity with developing film stages if they choose, if they found a developer to do that. And they probably wouldn't want residential too nearby those sound stages.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGania.
Now, was, was, was the question, I, I think they were asking, were they trying to take a commercial development and, you know, like where you have the business downstairs and the, and the multifamily upstairs? Is that?
So that's not for regional commercial. Those are for the mixed use zones. So there's three different mixed use zones throughout the city. And you'll notice if you take a look at our old general plan map, there's very few areas in the city that currently allow mixed use. And now we allow it all along Palmdale Boulevard, and as part of those village centers, they also incorporate mixed use, which is, does accommodate housing.
Do you know what the timeline on the status of the state deciding on the multifamily housing in your crystal ball there?
We do not have a date certain for that.
Okay, but it is being discussed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm just writing my notes here. Okay, um, and then in regards to Mr. Valdez's concerns about changing from a residential or allowing, not changing the zone, but allowing storage?
Sure, so I actually, I do have some history on, on that site, as he mentioned. So there was an application submitted at one point to sort of expand the commercial portion of the front of the property along Pear Blossom and do a higher density residential to the rear of the site. Originally was also, it was proposed as personal storage, and upon doing outreach with the adjacent neighborhood, the neighbors were very vocal, and that's why the development went back to a higher density residential rather than a more industrial, personal storage type use. So with the way the plan is proposed now, it doesn't take that project into consideration because it was withdrawn, it never moved forward. So currently, the front portion of, it's actually three parcels, is still designated for, it's either visitor commercial or neighborhood commercial. It's a lighter commercial designation. And then the rear of it is still single-family residential, which would be the, the standard seven thousand square foot lot type subdivision.
Okay, and that, that is based partly on input from the surrounding neighbors when that previous project was proposed?
I think that's part of why the previous project did not move forward. But the current designations are consistent with what is currently designated out there today. The proposed designations are consistent with current.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right, are there any further discussions on this item or questions for staff?
Can I circle back on to?
Sure.
Site One, and I think Mr. Norris and the public was saying that they need multi-housing in that area, right? And then I think you detailed that it's not good practice, right? So I'm just curious, the, the pros and the cons, and if we can get a further detailed explanation, number one, of why it's not good practice. And I think Mr. Norris said that it's a good idea moving forward to go ahead and support multifamily housing that practice. So I'm, it's like an open-ended question that I'd like to get an answer to within time, right?
So currently, the CDC has placed conditions on housing being closer than five hundred feet from the freeway because of the exposure of the elements that you get from being that close to the freeway. So that's condition number one and probably the most important. And as I mentioned, if there was a, it goes hand in hand, because it's not good practice in general to have that. And I, it's been done before, if you look at our city, but that doesn't mean that it needs to continue.
I would also like to say, I think frequently when you look at areas that do have housing near the freeway, it is not a desirable place to live. It, it would be offensive to many to live close to the freeway with the, with the smog, with the sound, with the, so, and obviously there are distance requirements, but the majority of people would probably not prefer to live right next to a freeway, I would imagine, just, I mean, right next to the freeway, so. I'm sorry, Mr. Norris. Please sit down. The public hearing is closed, and I have an attorney sitting up here watching me. Okay, do we have any further questions or is there anybody interested in making a motion or suggesting from your list of options with this?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution number PC dash two thousand twenty-two dash zero three-three, recommending City Council approval of the General Plan Amendment GPA twenty dash zero zero-three, readoption of the California Department of Housing, Community Development, certified twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine. Housing element certification of the program, Program Environmental Impact Report, twenty-two, twenty-two dash zero zero-two. SCH number twenty twenty-one zero six zero four nine four, and adoption of Statement of Overriding Considerations. In addition, adopt resolution number PC dash twenty twenty-two dash zero three-four, recommending the City Council approval of the establishment of an eighteen-month prohibition on amendments to the general plan.
And was that as amended?
As amended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Frogasains and a second from Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I would like to say what we are doing this evening is not putting anything in stone. This recommendation is that this will go forward to the City Council. This recommendation is that this will go forward to the city council. I know that Ms. Taggart is going to take into consideration Commissioner Fraga-Sanes's comments on the Beryl Springs area and expanding an open space. And I would like to say that trying to satisfy a hundred and eighty thousand people is a tough job. Everybody's going to have differences of opinions. And those who are fortunate to own property are obviously going to want some special considerations for theirs. I hope that we were able to answer some of the concerns a little bit, that the Health and Wellness will accommodate some residences for the workforce. It may not be multifamily housing, but it will be residential area for the workforce, which would facilitate the teaching hospital concept. I would like to say overall, I think that the general plan is updating a very outdated set of policies that we have. I think that the new one is so user-friendly, it was interesting to be able to go on to the website and click and see the attached linked documents. And I do believe it is reflecting the goals of our community that, based on the outreach that we saw you conduct. So overall, I know you're not going to please all of the people all the time, but I think we're going to please the majority of the people. And I do believe this is a good plan for the city of Palmdale going forward for the next twenty years. I would like to thank all the GPAC members who participated in this and all the community members who came out to the meetings. So with that said, may we please call for the roll call vote? I'll let you talk again, Ms. McAnya.
Roll call votes, Commissioner Alvarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee's?
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga-Sanes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Chair Nemeth?
Yes. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes, which means it will be coming before the city council at some date.
September twenty-first.
On September twenty-first. So you all have an opportunity to speak about this one more time. That will bring us to item nine, staff communications, Ms. Taggart.
So you did receive a tentative agenda for our October meeting. And it's a pretty packed agenda. We have some tentative maps, a use permit, and some revisions to our transit areas specifically.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Bettenhausen, do you have anything to add from the staff perspective?
No, no chair, nothing to add.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to our planning commission communications. Do any commissioners have anything to share or communicate? All right, I, I would like to say thank you to Kathy Enman for all of her service to our commission over the years. I know she's not going to be clerking for us anymore, so. And I'm sure she's watching tonight, so thanks Kathy. Because she might not be a Rams fan, I don't know, or maybe she is, I'm not sure. And once again, I do want to thank the GPAC members for your time and energy on this. I know it's been consuming some of your life. And it was a pleasure hanging out with some of you at the Planning Commissioners Academy a few years ago. Which seems like worlds ago, actually. But, and with that being said, I will adjourn our meeting to the Planning Commission meeting of October thirteenth at seven PM. Thank you all for coming, you are excused.